Well, I appreciate your honesty and I don't envy the positions you guys are in, but honestly, I just feel like as a mom and a teacher, I kind of wrap around why you would go against it, considering you're on the front lines to see what's happening. And instead of thinking, okay, well, we don't have a plan in place for pay for performance. Maybe we wipe this out and look at the children and say, how could it ever benefit not to get them any money? And we had 31, 32 kids in our class last year. And so get rid of the foster, get rid of the parents, get rid of the teachers, but just look at this young soul that's in front of you. And I just don't understand how, and not saying that throwing money will solve all problems. We still need parents to be involved and things like that. But I just can't wrap around that decision. And not that I want you to explain that, but the majority must have felt that way as well. And I wonder, will you, as a board member, do something to help change that mentality? And what would you bring to the board? And what would it make it for you to say yes? Because maybe that's going to make everyone else feel the action of their... I don't know. It's just all that we can do.
No, I understand. I understand your perspective. I'm sure you're not the one wanting to go out there.
It was a hard decision for me. It was a hard decision for every board member. You know, I remember, I mean, you spend a lot of time thinking about it. Because it's important, you know, if you would look at it, there are, look, there are people in my neighborhood. I live over in Wildcat Ridge in, uh, Flaubert, Flaubert. Both of them are out of work and they've got kids in schools. And, you know, we talked about, and I strongly objected to this language. And I wouldn't use it. And I objected when other people did. And it was only something like 20 bucks a month. It was, oh, it's for Starbucks. Well, that's not the people who I'm worried about. People I'm worried about are my, some of my neighbors. These are construction worker out of work. She wants to be a stay-at-home mom and, you know, her law license is lapsed, so she can't go back to work. They have two kids. Yeah, the 20 bucks a month means something to them. And it was, I will tell you what, I've been on the other side with other groups where they've asked me that question. How can, well, they wanted me to help them wrap their minds around the notion that in the middle of, I am in a depression that we were in, I could sit around and say, I'm going to vote to take taxes out of people's pockets. I can't afford it. It was a very, very hard decision for everybody. And, you know, I came down one way, Megan came down another, but it is not, I don't, it was a very hard decision. It was a 51-49 for everybody. Because people are hurting. People like to talk about this rich county that we have. There are people out there that aren't rich. So, yeah, cheer up. Well, and others, like the construction worker who lives in my neighborhood. And he would do anything to have a job, even if it's stuff like he wasn't getting what he deserved. He would do anything to be able to get up in the morning, go to his job, and come home, get a paycheck. And he's not right now.
I agree. And we see that as well because we have children that are coming to school hungry. And we're giving them snow and spitting our own money. I understand. But no, I appreciate your...
We have about two minutes left, and I want to get to a group of questions that we have about the school choice and vouchers. We have about two questions there that are all around the same topic. How will vouchers benefit those who do not take part? And can you explain why you're in favor of vouchers and choice? And how does it make financial sense for this district in this difficult financial environment?
Well, let me, first of all, define what we're talking about here. Because we're talking about a program that allowed 500 kids to go to a non-public school that had been certified by the district, you know, for accreditation process within the district, to go to the school of their choice. We, we, we did that because we thought that it is, it would be a good idea. One, let's find out if people out there do want to go to a new school. And two, frankly, if the school's not working for somebody, Nathan Oakley is the perfect example, who ended up putting money to put up on the HumanX Academy, who has Asperger's, and whose mother was very vocal of boarding, saying he's afraid to go to school because he's different. If he can go to HumanX Academy, he will be, he can get what he needs there. He said, you know what? We're going to see what that demand is out there. We're going to see what choices we can give people. Frankly, the voucher, it's an option certificate program, technically not a voucher, but it's a voucher. I mean, it's a tax increase, this is a voucher. The voucher program operates basically like charters do, except it's less expensive. We were allowing a kid to take the money that would otherwise have gone with them to a charter school or a neighborhood school, well, take charters out into a neighborhood school, and take that money to a private school. Some of them, in fact, were religious. And if you look at how charters operate, what the kid does is take that money and take it to a charter school. And it leaves the district. It operates the exact, financially, there can't be a dispute with how the voucher program was set up. Unless you have a dispute with how charters are run. Does charter run financially the same way? What we were doing, the way that money was being made, and I had a little qualm about this and we were going to address it as we moved forward, that we were taking 25% for sort of overhead, to make sure that it was cost neutral for the district to administer it, overseeing it and all that sort of thing. That was a problem, that was too much. And so that actually showed up as being money that was sort of a profit for the district. And we would have addressed that movement forward. But we didn't know the exact right amount to keep for overhead for administration. The other reason why actually it made, fiscally, it made a lot of sense is, what was real interesting, what we got was a lot of kids going into high school. And you know why? Because they were leaving anyway. At least in the first year of the program, we knew that they were going to, they were going to go to Regis or they were going to go to Mullen or they were going to go somewhere else. And so what we were doing is saying, well, we'll help pay for part of that. We'll keep part of it to administer the program. And we were actually capturing money that would have been 100% gone. So that was kind of, that's kind of the technical aspect of it. I mean, probably you're not as interested in the technical aspect of it as you are sort of philosophically. How did you guys get there? And from my point of view, it was just giving people the choices that they wanted. I think the system has got to be about kids and about providing the education that they want. And that's, I ran on that, actually. I was very vocal during my election that providing the maximum amount of flexibility to parents was what I was running for. I talk about vouchers and I, it's something that shouldn't have been a surprise. And I felt that that flexibility was important. And I don't think, you know, it hurts the school district. It doesn't, particularly at this initial stage.
Were there some money leaving? I mean, there were schools that were certified, they were outside of Douglas County, so that money was, there was no way...
Yeah, see, and that's, that's real, that's the real interesting part of it. The argument is that there's sort of, you know, there's economies of scale in school, you know? So you get enough kids and all of a sudden that they're, they're paying, you know, for the building, for the staffing. And, you know, every kid is incrementally providing more funding into the system. Now, there is the reverse, though, for a growing school district. Every, every kid is also, we're having to build new facilities. And when we, if we can provide some, it's quite possible that we're saving money also by capital. Now, we haven't done the analysis on it because for me, the analysis wasn't about that. The analysis is more about providing maximum flexibility for parents. But that argument sort of cuts both ways. And I think, I think you're, you're probably right in some cases, and I'm probably wrong in some cases. I just don't know how it shapes up. But we knew for 500 kids, and that's the number we had, it was a pilot program for 500, that the district was at least going to break even. That was my goal, to have them break even. No, you know, no cost to the district, no profit to the district.
For my part, I, to me, and perhaps this seems simplistic, but to me, it was a public-private partnership, permitting a small number of children to look for other educational options that they felt, the parents felt they weren't getting here. And I didn't feel like it was my place to say, yeah, you are getting money here.
That's the problem. Your impression, you gave the impression to the public that you were not for your own public school system.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, and I...
See, but I understand that's what you hear. But no, I understand that, I understand that's what you hear. I think, I, but that, I, I'm not going to back down. That's never been said. I've never said it, no other board member has ever said it. We've said the exact opposite. I think we have great schools. My kid's in a, in a public school. It's a charter, but it's a public school in Douglas County. I wouldn't have her there if I felt it was a bad school. And between all of us on the board, I think we had 18 kids who were in this, in the district. None of them are private school. So there are, that has never been said. We've always said the same thing, Ken, we have good schools. We have good teachers. You know, we have a, we have good parents, we have good kids. But that doesn't mean that every, that every kid in this district is going to want to go to a district school for a bunch of different reasons.
And I publicly stated too, one of my big goals was, okay, we have contracted with the CEO of the Springs to study these kids, the kids that were taking advantage of the scholarship program and saying, what are they looking for? What does their achievement look like? What does all this look like? Because, you know, a true voucher is like a backpack model. You hand the parent a check, you never see the kid again. It's gone. There's no accountability, that's it. And we didn't, we weren't interested in that. We were interested in saying, what are these people leaving the district to look for? And how can we incorporate some of that into what we're doing? Clearly, there's lessons to be learned. If it's religion, then, you know, there's nothing we can do about that. But what academically are they looking for? What do they feel like they're not getting here? And how can we create these partnerships and learn these lessons? It was never meant to be about our existing teachers.
Perhaps so. Perhaps so. I don't think it's fair. As part of this... Yeah. I'm wondering if they're...
I think you were, you had your hand up for a while now. And we're happy to sit here past 8:30. But frankly, it does, we want to make sure we answer your questions and we can't if we don't do them, so.
I think that's the impression that basically most of the public has. I have two neighbors that actually were going to use the voucher system. And quote, they said, Douglas County schools are failing. And if I can go somewhere else and they're going to help me, I'm taking advantage of that. So I think that's the impression they're like, oh, well, I don't want to be in my kid's, in a class of 32, 34 kids. I'm going to go somewhere where they can meet my needs because this Douglas County is not doing that anymore. That's what I think we need to work on as an education community, is we need to meet the needs of our kids and throw all the politics and...
It's not, this isn't, look, if this were politics for me, I don't vote for tax. I mean, let's be very clear about something. If I were in this for politics, the way to advance my political career isn't to vote for two tax increases. If I were in this for politics, I would have taken a very different approach to this. What I would tell you about your neighbors, though, is that maybe the schools are failing there. I don't know. I don't know them, just as I don't know your kids, just as I don't know the 60,000 kids that are in the district. If that's the case, I want them to be able to get their kids somewhere where they feel that they can succeed. Nathan Oakley would be the perfect example. The kid said the school was failing and the mother said that. I don't, I don't know if that's true or not. What I know is that I want them to get somewhere where they think they can succeed.
We want that to hear that.
Yeah, me too, me too. Because I, you know what I think a good school district looks like? Good, numerous neighborhood schools, good, numerous charter schools, an online program like we have, private schools, contract schools, the maximum amount of options available. It's got, I think it's got to be, it's got to be choices for the parents. And I think that's the thing that makes the district most successful. But, you know, but I hear you about, we heard the messages, believe it or not. And we do what we can, but, you know, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious what the response would be if you would, instead of saying, here, go up, if your needs are not being met here, you can go somewhere else. I wonder if what the, what the outcome would have been if you would have said, we can meet your needs here in Douglas County. I'm sure that if you don't like your neighborhood school, you can open enrollment here. I'm curious to know if, what's the outcome?
Well, we are trying to address that, I think, by saying, all right, schools, all of you need to say, here's what you offer, here's what you can do for various parents. Maybe the parent who's trying to leave the district doesn't know that the school just two miles away offers this program that they're looking for. You know, and so we did try to facilitate, saying, all right, you know, have you considered this? Have you, you know, but again, I don't know that, I think some of us were saying, is it really our job to, to say, no, you know, you're not, your feelings about the failure of your child or the system that he's in is inadequate, we know better? You know, so we're trying to strike this balance between we know better and, you know, oh yeah, you're absolutely right, you need to just go away. You know, we never wanted to say, we think we're just going to shunt you off somewhere else because we're not interested in meeting your needs.
Well, and the whole process that we do with vouchers is part of what's called the Choice Task Force. And vouchers got the most attention, surprise. But we did things like open enrollment, that's a great point about open enrollment. Because the open enrollment system, I think, works better now. I don't, I, I have an open enrollment, so I don't count the before or after. But our analysis of the open enrollment process sort of demonstrated that it was a real hassle to use. Has anybody here opened enrollment, by the way? When, when, when was the, when did you do that?
January.
Yeah.
Was it easier? Was it, was it customer-friendly? Was it...
I opened enrollment with my older son and now this year too. It wasn't, I don't, and I don't think it was difficult before. Actually, I'm...
I've opened enrollment with three kids since. My oldest is now in sixth grade, teaching in first grade here. And I've had no problems whatsoever.
Well, because what we tried to do was provide different windows. And it's interesting because I'm going to go back and look at that because we had real negative feedback on open enrollment. And one of the things we wanted to do was make it work better because that's a choice. That's a choice within the system that we wanted to help people make. And the idea was, we got this negative feedback, so we thought, well, let's get some people in to look at it. Yeah.
I actually thought it was harder because when I was on pencil paper and I could send it in, I actually could write down why. And when I'm a teacher in this feeder area, I really need my son to go to similar middle school. And it was denied because electronically, I didn't have the option to do that. It was like, okay, I don't have another, he doesn't have a sibling there, he's not, you know? So it was denied anyway. So I, I mean, that would be something that we need with...
No, that's, that's actually good feedback. Because, you know, one of the things, and this is our fault, by the way. We talk, we talk about the, we'll get asked about the vouchers a lot, so we talk about the vouchers a lot. And frankly, we talk about it anyway. I mean, it's not your fault that we're talking about vouchers. We talk about it anyway. But one of the things we don't do a good enough job of talking about is what choice really need. And the voucher part impacted 500 kids. We had hoped to impact thousands by making open enrollment easier. We may have impacted it differently than we thought, but I'll look at that. We wanted to make, just make a bunch of different contract schools, online schools, make a bunch of different public options available also. Because, you know, the private options are kind of limited. I mean, it's kind of a voucher or a contract school, you know, not much else. I think the public, the choices inside the public education system are vast. And we need to make those easier too. So I, but I appreciate your feedback on the open enrollment stuff. And if you got feedback, give it because that's kind of a, I like to make, I think that's real important, so. Sorry, you've been waiting a long time.
Yeah, I just, I have to agree. I think we are failing our kids. Are our schools bad? No. Could they be better? Yes. We have, how can we have so many charter schools, say, compared to Cherry Creek School District and others? And the charter schools feel that they are superior to us. And I think we just need to find a happy medium in between as far as education, homework, everything else. I know you are doing a survey that went out for, I believe, the middle school and high school. And then I would say there may be one to come for the elementary schools and like the upper levels. I think a survey needs to go out to every school, asking parents, what do they want? What are they willing to give? Why can't we get volunteers? I mean, we're turning down these bonds and mills and everything else. I mean, what are we willing to give? I would give up Starbucks happily to know that my kids can have a great future. And there are other things. I know just trying, like at our school, trying to raise money for science kits and stuff like that. I think any parent would be happy to be charged $3 more, $2 more at registration to know that they're helping their kid. I mean, our science scores have advanced, the kids love it. I mean, people need to understand, there's no such thing as free education anymore. You know, it's just like, our tax money goes to prisons and stuff like that. Do I want it going there? No. Do I know anybody who's there who's being supported? No. But you know what? It's keeping most of our area safe. It's helping us out, keeping them off the street. I mean, we need to decide what is important to us. And I think that's what you guys need to find out, what parents are willing to give and how we can meet it to help our kids succeed.
Well, I tend to agree with, with a lot of what you said. As far as the charters, I don't, I don't, I mean, Doug might be able to address this better than I since he has a child and is in a charter school. Everything I've heard from them, I don't believe that they mean to convey that they feel superior.
Anybody you talk to, they do.
I will say...
You talk to me, I feel that way.
Well, you can't see...
I know, but you know, that...
Well, but don't you? Because your child's not going to his or her home, your home school. You chose charter because you think they're better.
But I chose charter because, and you've got to be careful with this because frankly, I, a generalization, and I don't care about charters, I mean, you can, you know, say about me what you want, but a generalization about any group is doing to do nothing but divide. Quite frankly, arguably, the 2008 election was lost because charters were not included. Arguably, I kind of think it would have went down anyway, but it certainly would have been a lot closer. I reserve for myself the same option I want to give every other parent in this district to choose what's right for my kid and not be second guessed about it. So I give that right to you and I deserve it for myself as well. But I think you've got to be very careful because I, I think people choose charters for a bunch of reasons. People choose private schools for a bunch of reasons. People choose online schools for a bunch of reasons. Those reasons aren't really important. What's important is can we all kind of figure out that we're in this for one reason, which is education.
I mean, and also state law constrains us on charter schools too. I mean, and this is not meant to be a commentary on what we believe is right or not right. But we cannot, a lot of people say to us, you know, the neighborhood schools really need money and we can't, let's just kind of quit, quit with the charter schools for a while. We don't need more charter schools, we don't need more choice right now. What we need to do is compensate our neighborhood schools. And I hear that perspective, but we, if a parent group comes to us for the new charter school, it is illegal not to hear it. You can't say, sorry, we're not really moving in that direction right now. We have to hear it. And if they're denied, they can and will appeal to the State Board of Education. And the State Board of Education can and has overruled local boards to install those schools. So, I mean, that's a fact. You know, so I mean, for folks to say, you know, we need to cut it out with charter schools for a while, I understand why they're saying that, but we can't do that. So I hope that makes sense. I mean, I'm happy to talk to anybody about laws, but I, I mean, we can't, we, our hands are tied, I understand.
We have one more question that I want to get to. We have, I actually have a couple of questions around, what are your goals to ensure that our students are going to be adequately prepared for 21st century learning and for 21st century workforce with new standards and innovative ideas? Or is it more a little... I think just generally, the questions are around what is the board's, what are your goals around preparing students for strategic...
Well, to me, I mean, introducing that idea is kind of like, there's two conversations right there already. Graduation requirements, I think, there's kind of two sides to this point. There's a side that says, you know, by reducing graduation requirements, you kind of send the wrong message to the community by saying, you know, we're cutting them out that our children need to graduate and to move on to higher education. And that kids who want to move on to certain institutions of higher learning need to do more voluntarily and they need to really make special arrangements or whatever's happening these days, a lot of different things at different schools. On the other hand, you know, with the, we also, I mean, if you ask Justin Williams, another board member, about this, he has really definitive opinions about the idea of striking a balance between graduation requirements that are a certain lower level and requirements that may be too high that prevent students from making some choices. I myself know a couple of students that chose to go with an open enrollment to Rappel High School because we required certain classes that they felt that they had backgrounds already with. And by taking these classes, they missed opportunities to other classes they thought would advance their own goals and objectives. So, you know, these two, these two kids left, you know, we have settling and they're gone because they didn't feel like we could meet that need. You know, as far as 21st century learning, one of the things the board is doing, and we've had some really great conversations in our retreats and things like that, and you can probably find those tapes somewhere, but our end statements. We had, we had a list of end statements that we didn't believe was moving forward with 21st century learning. And so we said, all right, rather than all these prescriptive statements, we're going to create some concepts that say, these are in support of 21st century learning. And we went out and we said, all right, what's the research on 21st century learning? How can we get out there and say, here are the concepts that education experts agree that we need to center our future discussion of the 21st century learning around? And how can we pull some of those into some broad concepts for 21st century learning? So that's what we're kind of pressing forward with now in terms of our strategic plan. If you look at our strategic plan, there's some of this in there. And I know that our assistant performance folks, Dr. Fagan, would love to chat with any of you who are far more of educators than we are, to really get into, delve into the particulars of it. So I think, you know, we talk about the four C's, you know, the collaboration and that sort of thing. And we talk about kids who are in your first grade classes right now that we don't even know, the jobs that they're going to do when they graduate don't exist, they're just not, you know? So we recognize that we need to plan for that. And it's interesting to try to look into that crystal ball for the future. But we feel like we're doing a better job than we were, you know, five, 10 years ago.
And I endorse what Megan said. I actually want to ask a bit of a different question. How many district employees and teachers do we have moving? Okay, that's, I'm, a majority, close. And I guess the point I want to make is, you know, I'm, I think I know, I think I hear, I think I know what's being said about us out there. One of the things is we just don't, we don't care about you or ideology. They only want to do, you know, what the, you know, the folks who are ideologically similar to us want us to do. I guess there would be, coming here doesn't surprise me. And I'm actually pleased that there are a amount of teachers and district employees here that there are. Because, you know, I want to talk to you.
Well, we're also taxpayers and parents.
You are also taxpayers and parents. And also happen to teach in the district, which means that talking to you is even more valuable to us. And the point is, if, if, I kind of expected that was the case and I'm okay with it, I'm happy about that. The point being is, I wouldn't be here if I didn't value your opinion, if I didn't want to hear what you had to say. Doesn't mean I'm going to agree, doesn't mean Megan's going to agree, doesn't mean Megan and I don't know who'd agree. But the fact of the matter is that I want to come, I want to hear, and I want to keep an open mind. There are some things we may not agree on. There are 95% of the things I have a completely open mind on because I think I've made the best decision. I think. I don't know. And so talking to you sort of helps me figure out whether I'm making the best decision or not. And so you may walk out of here feeling better about us or worse about us, but you should walk out of here feeling that we don't have our minds made up about what teachers are and who they are and what they believe. Because it's not true. Because if that were the case, I wouldn't be here. I'd be at home, doing whatever I do on Wednesday night, which I'm actually...
I'd be an honorary taxpayer.
Yeah, so, anyway, take, if that's the one thing you take out of this, you know, just take that. You don't have to walk out of here feeling like I support this guy or this board. But it would be great if you walked out of here saying, they're here because they actually want to hear us. So, thanks.
Well, we just said we were going to go until late 30. And I know we are all parents and have papers, grades, and et cetera. So we definitely want to honor your time. I know both Doug and Megan, as well as other board members, are always open to feedback. Of course, the twice monthly meetings are open for the, to the public as well, where the public comments that are able to be shared during that time. I hope that, first of all, thank you very much for coming and, like I said, spending time away from your families, for being here. Thanks very much to our great sat committee, as well as we have Chad, who doesn't have any kids, doesn't live in our area, but he's a community representative who comes... any kids, doesn't live in our area, but he's a community representative who comes once a month to meet with us as well, so thank you, Chad. So I hope we did address your questions. I know there's a couple other questions that were addressed, and I, and if I was going to have to specifically address to me, that I will talk about. You know, I always send old newsletters, and probably like, "Oh, my gosh, it comes to the one we see," because it's twenty pages long, but I, I, I am passionate about this school, and I'm passionate about all the kids that attend here. My son, I have three kids, as many of you know, have attended Iron Horse Elementary since kindergarten. I jokingly say, you know, when I was not the principal here, I got a call from Nancy Richardson, the former DRT, because my son Brennan, who's now a freshman, was bawling his brains out in kindergarten, Mrs. Blevins' class, and, "What are you gonna do?" So we robbed him of blankie, and, and hopefully helped that. But I still have a fifth grader here at Iron Horse Elementary School, in Mrs. Mendelson's class, in one at Simra and one at Legend. So they have all gone through here, so when we make decisions, when I make decisions, it's hopefully what I always say, "At the best interest of, of all the kids here," of all currently five hundred and forty kids. And I'm welcome to any input that you guys have against, questionless and concerned about, I don't know if it was me specifically, or maybe another administrator. Patricia Han, Hannah is my direct supervisor, and so you could, you're always more than welcome to contact her, and she always gets back to me if any concerns are a voice. I'd always encourage you to come talk to me first, if, but if not, you could always speak to her as well. And, and there was another question about just, um, class makeups, how we go about doing that. We're actually currently working on what we call "Peaking Blues," where teachers are, are putting a lot of thought into the class makeup. Once we, you know, when we were four-track, you had, a lot of you were around here when we were four-track, we could not make those decisions, because you were stuck on track, but now we really put a lot of thought into the class makeup for the following year. The teachers actually sit down and look at that, and then I looked at it, and I meet with our sped teams, just to make sure, again, we have a good dynamic in those classrooms. So, we, I think it's a pretty thorough process. But again, I, you know, I mentioned earlier about SAC meetings, we're always more than welcome to come to those, I'm sure you could go, and that's something we always talk about.